Hey guys, welcome to another edition of Future City. I'm your host Jason Haber. Today my guest is Councilmember Mark Levine. He represents the 7th District here in Manhattan. We're talking about the kinds of things that government needs to work on for cities to thrive in the future. Things like access to mass transit, healthcare, housing, climate change, how we fight it, and what we need to do about cities in the future. City Councilman Mark Levine, thank you so much for being here today.
It is a pleasure Jason, making podcasts history.
You love this, right? So you're like a big deal in the city council here in New York City. No, 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 no. I mean, you're a senior member, you're a Chair of the Health Committee, I believe, right? So like, and just very quickly, your district, just brag about it. Cause there's something to be bragged about.
I am honored to represent the great 7th District in Northern Manhattan. It covers parts of the Upper West Side, West Harlem, and Washington Heights. I've now been elected to two terms, chaired the Parks Committee last term, Chair on Health this time, and really loving every day of the job.
And it's a diverse district too.
One of the most diverse in the city. Almost equal parts Latino, African American, and white. And one of the most vibrant places you'll ever visit. And to represent it is just an honor and really a thrill every day.
I think when people come from outside of cities and they come from areas that maybe are more homogeneous and they see how people can live, work, and thrive together when there is diversity, it's actually a strength to the community, that it's a great neighborhood for people to come and see.
They need to come to Uptown Manhattan. We are working together on the challenges that we face in the district. And I know we'll be talking about many of them today, but a huge opportunity for building diverse coalitions around the challenges that we all face as tenants, as people who ride mass transit, as people who are concerned about the health of our neighborhoods, the future of mom and pop retail. These issues touch everybody and we're building coalitions uptown that bring people together around these challenges.
So let's get into some of those right now. Let's start with health because just when you think or thought that the scourge of smoking was defeated here and everywhere, it's not. And it's not in a very, very serious way right now with what's happening with vaping and e-cigarettes. Like, I think some people are caught off guard by both the hazards. For some reason when you throw an "e" in and everyone, "Oh fuck it, it's not bad for you." There's an "e" in front of it, how bad can it be? But it's actually incredibly dangerous. We're just learning now about how dangerous it is. And the targeting, which really bothers me about this, is the targeting to kids. And you're working on this.
This is smoking 2.0. This is big tobacco 2.0. We are in the midst of an epidemic of e-cigarettes among teenagers in the city and country, in high school, in middle school. We had a hearing on this. Kids as young as 11 came out to say they don't go to the bathrooms in their schools because they know everybody's gonna be vaping. Unless you be fooled, e-cigarettes contain a very heavy dose of nicotine and plenty of other chemicals. And they're being marketed to kids through this menu of fruity candy sounding flavors, cherry, bubble gum, chocolate mint, mango. They're obviously designed to appeal to kids, and they do. So we have a bill in the New York City Council to ban the sale of these kind of fruity candyish flavors. We're getting momentum, we've got 22 co-sponsors, and we are really optimistic that we are gonna protect kids in this city by banning the flavors that are hooking them.
So Michigan, I think, was the first state to do the ban, right?
Yes, San Francisco has banned all e-cigarettes. Michigan just banned flavors. Look, if you're an adult who wants to quit traditional cigarettes, then e-cigarettes are a step in the right direction.
Sure, that's a different conversation though, right?
Totally, but we don't want young people falling into this addiction.
And I think the new problem now is, what we're seeing is, is that there's this illness that they can get from it, from the cigarettes too.
200 people got sick over the summer. Teenagers and young adults, yes. Lung disease. The one thing they had in common, they all used vaping. We don't know the cause exactly yet, but the smoking gun is the e-cigarette.
So you've been helping, holding hearings on this.
Absolutely, this is one of my top priorities as health chair.
Do you get the e-cigarette lobbyists?
They have hired every lobbyist in New York City. And they come and protest at all conferences.
Give me the counter argument, like what do they say?
The best argument they have is the need of adult smokers to transition off. And I get that. That's why we're not seeking to ban all vaping products. And our bill will allow for tobacco flavored e-cigarettes. Because kids aren't using tobacco flavored, they're using cherry and mango flavored. And if you're an adult smoker and you wanna switch from actual smoke, what they call combustible cigarettes, to tobacco flavored e-cigs, go for it. But don't sell bubble gum flavored vaping products, cause you know you're hooking kids.
Are the delivery devices already banned in all schools in New York?
Officially, but they don't emit an odor. All they give off is water vapor. So you can actually be smoking in the back, or I should say vaping, in the back of a classroom, hidden behind, say, a textbook, and there's really no way for the teacher to know. And you can certainly do it in the bathroom stall, and there'd be no way to detect it. So there are kids who are showing up to school this week, first week of school, they have their notebook and their magic marker and a vaping device. It's a little, it looks like a, basically a USB drive. And in fact, it is, it's rechargeable via USB. And frankly, it's kinda cool. And it had been marketed in the early years via social media with young, attractive influencers who really saw this as a lifestyle choice. And that marketing worked. And I called this big tobacco 2.0 because the main company in this space, Juul, is now owned 35% by Altria, Philip Morris. So here we go again.
Right, and remember when those, the five heads of all of the tobacco companies went before Congress, way back when, and said that none of them believed that nicotine was addictive? And they all knew it, they all lied before Congress. And the track record of these companies is abhorrent. It is everything against public health and the betterment of our society, they don't care.
We've seen this movie before.
Yeah, yeah, but I wanna get to a bigger picture on public health because things like e-cigarettes are drains on our, on our public health. There are things that people are doing now in cities that are actually helping public health and reducing healthcare costs. Things like alternative means of transportation, bikes for example. I know you've been a big proponent of those. In your neighborhood, what are you seeing in terms of use and adaptation of bike lanes and all that alternative transportation?
Any of your listeners who have spent even a minute on a Midtown Manhattan street know that we have a crisis of congestion in the city.
Hundred percent.
Where now, it is faster to walk in much of Midtown than it is to move by vehicle. And that is hurting our economy, it is hurting our environment. Our air quality is contributing to global warming, and it's a safety threat. We have got to solve this problem, we have got to reduce congestion, we have got to get people out of private cars. We need alternatives, environmental alternatives, from walking to biking to mass transit. And to make that possible, we have to rethink our streets. Which, since the days of Robert Moses, that policy had been driven really only by the imperative of serving the needs of cars.
Car-centric planning.
We need balanced planning for our streets, so that everybody is safe. Whether you're on foot, on a bicycle, in a bus, and yes, in a car. But we have been out of balance for generations. And so I'm working uptown to redesign the streets with that kind of safety in mind. We have pushed through a redesign of Upper Amsterdam Avenue, from 110th Street to 155th Street, where we are averaging 100 injuries per year in traffic. And it's one of the most dangerous stretches in Manhattan. It hasn't been redesigned since the 1950s. We are pushing a plan that would reduce traffic by creating turn lanes, creating a bike lane, extending the sidewalk for pedestrians. It's a modern vision of a street, it's working elsewhere. It was fought tooth and nail by opponents in my district.
What was the argument?
It's a 45 block stretch, we are going to lose six parking spots along that stretch. And people fought it because of that, and other reasons. We have got to change the paradigm on the way we design our streets, and we've gotta put safety first.
Right, I mean, we know it works when you put people on bicycles, the success is unbelievable. I mean, the, how many fatalities have there been in City Bike 2, I think, which of course-
Millions of rides.
Millions and millions of rides. If that was, if cars were that safe, I mean, the reason why accidents aren't in the news every day is because they happen every day, multiple times a day, and so they're not newsworthy.
That's exactly right.
But when someone, something happens on a city bike, it is newsworthy because it's so safe.
Yes.
Now that, a new proposal that the mayor has come out with here, where at least he's talking about is having helmets be worn on all city bikes here. What do you think about that?
I certainly don't support that being the law in New York City because it would serve to reduce the number of people who are using bicycles.
The end of-
And one of the, the core principles of bike safety is if there's only one bike on the street, that person is quite vulnerable. When there are a lot of bicycles on the street, it changes the culture of the streetscape.
And the dedicated lane.
Yes, well dedicated lane for sure, to have real protected space on the street. But when biking becomes part of the culture, it changes the way people drive and walk and bicycle. And so it becomes safer. We don't want barriers to people getting on bicycles. And one of the beauties of City Bike, of bike share, is you can hop on for an unplanned trip because you gotta quickly move across town. And if that was prohibited, because most people don't walk around with bike helmets in their backpack, then it would reduce usage and it would hurt the growth of that system. And it would ultimately make the streets less safe. It may be counterintuitive-
It is very counterintuitive.
That is the experience as it has played out around the world, and we need to be very cognizant of that lesson.
Right, so let's talk now about some regional transportation issues. And right now, we're spending $2 billion on a new shiny airport at LaGuardia. Okay, so there's no rail access to get there directly. I find this, this drives me crazy. Here in New York, if I wanna go to, even if I wanna go to JFK Airport, I have to take two trains and I essentially have to walk between them. That we still, we're spending billions of dollars on the airports as hubs, but yet the ways to get there really still rely on the car and there's some buses, but there's no rail. Drives me crazy that we're still not thinking about how we're moving massive amounts of people efficiently to the airports. I mean, in your, in your district, how do people get to the airport?
Well, we are, I think, unique among major global cities in not having easy, direct rail access to our airports. It is, it's really quite stunning that still in 2019, we haven't managed to pull that off. And it means to get to the airport, you are going to be stuck in traffic. From Manhattan, maybe for 60 minutes, maybe for 90 minutes, depending on what time of day. Again, a drag on our economy, not good for our environment, and, and, and not what you would expect from the greatest city in the world.
It's costly, and it's not cheap to get to the airport.
Absolutely, and if you wanna get there on mass transit, it's a combination, probably of multiple modes of, of at least one bus and maybe two trains. We have something at JFK called Airtrain-
Yes, Jais.
Which is fabulous, it only connects to the near subway stop. But even that limited route has been wildly successful. It has exceeded the usage predictions. People forget that, that there's a workforce that needs to get to the airport every day. And for them to commute and not have to bring a car is an incredible asset and also relieves congestion. We need that kind of access to the core of the city in Manhattan for both New York City airports.
I think it says something that, I've gone, I've taken the bus out, I've tried all these different methods. I haven't taken the helicopter yet. But, but I find fascinating that the helicopter becomes an option because of our failings. It's not because it's so cool to take a helicopter, it's a five-minute helicopter ride. It's because it's such a pain to get to the airport the other ways, that there are people who would like to drop $200, $250 because it's the only way for them to get there efficiently.
Yes, that I don't think is a, I don't think that's a scalable plan-
No, it's not, of course not. No, but it's like, I know people who take it because they say, "I just can't, I can't sit traffic for two hours." But that's what it's come to. So, traffic, next thing I wanna talk about, traffic, traffic, traffic. Congestion pricing is coming here in New York, what do you think?
I'm a huge supporter. We have got to address both the congestion crisis in Midtown that I mentioned earlier and develop a sustainable revenue to fix our mass transit. Congestion pricing does both.
So for people who are, who are not from here, are not familiar with this whole concept, let's just give them an overview, congestion pricing is-
Nothing new, it's been in place in London for years, in Singapore and elsewhere.
But to this country-
We'll be the first in America. The idea is very simple, if you wanna enter the core business district during peak rush hour times, you're gonna have to pay a fee. And that will reduce the use, we believe, of private vehicles during key rush hour, and it'll generate, we estimate, a billion and a half dollars for our desperately underfunded mass transit. It's been done successfully elsewhere, it's long overdue that we'll do it in New York City. The plan here is that in Manhattan, south of 60th Street, you will pay the congestion charge. It'll be variable, we have great technology now, there's gonna be an electronic reader, it might even not be noticeable from the street. It'll allow us to vary the charge. You'll pay a lot during the peak hours, maybe $12 during morning and evening rush, but if you're coming at-
Each way?
Only going inbound.
Going in?
Yes, only inbound. And, but if you're traveling at 1:00 AM on a Tuesday, you'll probably pay very little. And that would also shift traffic, we hope, out of the rush times. But getting $1.5 billion of revenue for the subway system will have a transformative effect. We are backlogged on modernizing the signal system, on upgrading stations, including for elevator accessibility. Our bus network definitely needs to be modernized. And we can start to do that with the revenue that congestion pricing will generate.
And people don't know this, but our, the switching system in the subway is, it's like 100 years old. The company doesn't even exist anymore, right? Like, I mean, that's how old it is.
It's vacuum tubes.
Vacuum tubes.
It, it looks like something out of historical movies.
Love the millennials are going, "What's a vacuum tube?"
They can Google it. And it's probably the single biggest reason why you sit on the, on the platform waiting a very long time for subways. The signals are so crude, we can't take the risk of running trains close together. Go to London, and as you see one train leaving the tunnel, you can probably look back in the other direction and see the next train start to arrive. We can't do that in New York because the risk would be that they might collide. If we had modern signaling, we can run them close together. And, and the head of NYC Transit, Andy Beiford, says, "I wanna have an every two-minute scheduled timing." And once we do that, you'll expand capacity, you'll make the subways more attractive, and people will get out of their cars and out of their Ubers and back into mass transit. So, they're, they're leaving mass transit right now, Jason.
That's the problem, ridership is down.
Yes, particularly-
Very dangerous.
Down 2% in the last year on subways, down 6% on buses. And that's a death spiral. Particularly buses, because what are people doing when they get off the buses? They're getting into cars, private cars or Ubers. That's gonna worsen congestion, that's gonna slow buses further, and that's going to mean more people getting off the buses and into cars. It's a death spiral, and sooner or later, the transit authority is going to announce they have to cut service because of the reduced ridership. That has already happened on some lines. To, to, to get that cycle moving in the right direction, we have to reduce congestion, we have to modernize our buses. I'm a big proponent of a, of a system that's called Transit Signal Priority, which times the traffic lights, so that if a bus is approaching, it turns green.
They don't do that here now, we, we don't have-
We're, we're starting on a few lines, five or six so far. But on, on the Manhattan lines, 21% of the time of a trip is spent stopped at red lights. If we eliminate the red lights, which you can do by Transit Signal Priority, then you've just cut 21% of the travel time. We already have GPS on all the buses. The, the traffic lights are already connected to the Wi-Fi network. There's no new hardware needed, we just have to activate it. And we're pushing this very hard to speed bus travel.
And so do you think that, once you do that, so you've got faster bus travel, faster mass transit, and then you're pushing people there because of the expense and of the, of congestion pricing, that you then have a city that's less congested and more in a, in a better position to grow? This is what I wanted to ask you about next, because growth is imperative for any city. When you have stagnation or population decline, cities fall apart. So, how do we make this city, or any city going forward, affordable and livable for not just, you know, people who work in finance? Like, that's, this is a big challenge, I think, we have right now.
It is. If we don't find a way to add more housing in the city, especially affordable housing, then we're gonna turn into San Francisco. Which spent most of the last two decades, as you know, constraining growth, and now you have to be a tech millionaire if you wanna get housing in downtown San Francisco. Transit is directly connected to this challenge. We need density at transit hubs, and we need a regional strategy here. Every suburban rail stop on Metro North and Long Island Railroad should have dense housing on top of it. That's actually being done now in downtown New Rochelle, it's the next town outside of the Bronx. But of course, we need reliable commuter rail to make that work, or this whole thing falls apart. I do believe that we need to grow in a way that is sensitive, however, to the context of neighborhoods, to the history of neighborhoods, to the human scale of neighborhoods. So I'm not happy about the 100-story glass towers going up on 57th Street.
Cast shadows, that environment. Who's living there?
Yes, I mean, as a former Parks Chair, I'm so hurt by the impact on Central Park of these buildings which are casting one-mile shadows into Central Park. It's changing the ecosystem in the southern half of the park. It is providing very little housing. These buildings, even if they were full, would only hold a few dozen families. But you know, as you look up at them at night, they're all dark. And sometimes people think there must be a blackout there, no! No one lives there.
But pound for pound, my problem is that people often say things like, "Well, the argument, the debate between Jane Jacobs and Robert Moses is over." Everyone knows that Jane Jacobs is, is right, but it's another thing to say that she actually won. And I use that as a classic example to say, Jane Jacobs won, how is it that we have these buildings going up that cast shadows on Central Park that don't really accommodate for housing for many people? When we have this true crisis. And on top of that, we look at Hudson Yards, which to me, when I first toured it and I was, I kept an open mind, I spent several hours there. My thought was, all it needed was a casino, and it belonged in Las Vegas. If it had a soul, it would've belonged in New York, but it's this, it's this big empty plaza, these super tall buildings built for the very rich. And I thought that this is exactly the kind of project that Robert Moses would've loved. Would've relished everything about it, including the fact that there's very little mass transportation there in one subway line. But, and he would've liked the way the cars, it was built for the road to go through with the cars. But, but isn't that an example of a place where you could've built 50,000 housing units there? I mean, if they had, I mean, this, this stayed on the land, and there you go.
Huge missed opportunity to, to build in a way that, that reflects the souls of neighborhoods and the fabric of a vibrant street space with quirky retail.
Yeah.
And not something that feels like a New Jersey shopping mall. Thankfully, it's not over yet, the second half has yet to take shape.
That's what I wanted to ask you about.
I think this is our last chance to get it right. And to find a way to have human-scale streets with small, unique retail that brings people together, that's accessible to people of all income levels, not only targeted to the super rich.
The cake isn't baked on that yet?
I, I think there's varying levels of flux on, on, some of those buildings haven't even been financed yet. So I think there still is an opportunity to shape it.
We can't judge developments and projects based on how rich they make the owner of the Miami Dolphins. Like, there has to be like, what's the, what's the community score? Like, what's the community gain on, on these projects? What does the city need? Like, think about the city as a whole, like, what does the city need? Here you have all this empty land in a great location, and what, like, what's gonna help make the city thrive in the future? Is it gonna be developments, like, like what's up there? Are they going to think about the things that you just said, which I think could've been so interesting here? Low-scale, low-rise, you, you could've made another sort of mini, little villages there and, and done what? If you look at like Essex Crossing, for example, where they have this great big food hall, and they invited all the local guys who had these little street corner stores. And they're in there, and you walk in, it's thriving, it's dynamic, it's interesting because it has density. And then you go there, it's the exact opposite. I mean, I've been there a few times and I've been the only person in the frickin' mall. I mean, like, it's, it's half-empty.
And, and the Domino Project across the river, on the Brooklyn waterfront, which has narrow streets and brick facades and quirky little cafes and a park that, that retained the old industrial equipment. It's a real place, it has a sense of place, it ain't New Jersey.
Right.
And-
Well, the people in New Jersey are unsubscribed already.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Rob, make it know, we just lost New Jersey.
Okay, not a vote I'm trying to call today. But that parcel number two at Hudson Yards, that's the last big open space in Manhattan. That's it.
That's it.
This is our last chance to prove we can do it right. And before there are shovels in the ground there, and actually, it hasn't even been redecked, you know? For listeners elsewhere, this is on top of a rail yard. And today, you can still see the tracks on, on this department unbuilt. So, they have to build a deck yet, it's probably years away from, from the steel going up on new buildings. And that gives us an opportunity to do this right. It's our last chance, we gotta do it right.
So Manhattan is an island, people forget. We're, we are an island, we're a deep-water harbor, one of the greatest in the world. It's why this, the city grew so quickly as it did in the early 1800s. But being surrounded by water, we have this constant new threat of climate change that I wanna talk to you about. Because this is, most cities in the world are coastal cities. By 2050, we're gonna have a world population of just under 10 billion. Two-thirds of them are going to live in cities. What are we going to do? How do we think future in terms of ensuring that we don't have cities underwater? That people, that there's not food scarcity, that there's not water scarcity? These are real challenges that are in our lifetime, we're going to be facing. This isn't like 200 years down the road anymore, this is real-time now stuff. And we're seeing it with all the storms and the temperatures in Europe from this past summer were unbelievable. If you don't believe in climate change, I equivocate you to the kinds of people who stood before Congress and lied about tobacco. And said that nicotine is not addictive. It's that level of ignorance that you have to have at this point. So as a policymaker here, like, where, where should we be thinking about?
We have to fight a two-front war. We have to move dramatically to curtail our emissions of greenhouse gases. And we're doing that in some important ways I'll mention. And then we have to acknowledge that climate change isn't just over the horizon, it's here. And sea levels are rising, and extreme weather is becoming more common. And we have to build our city in a way that protects us against that. And on the emissions front, in New York, in cities everywhere, the number one source of greenhouse gases isn't cars or diesel trucks.
It's buildings, right?
It's our buildings. That is 60 to 70% of greenhouse gas emissions. Now, when we build new buildings, they're generally pretty efficient. But this is a built-out city, and the older stuff is incredibly inefficient.
No thought was put into them about energy efficiency.
No, no, not at all, and they haven't been retrofitted. Though building owners would save a lot of money over, over time from energy savings, they're not doing it, and we've tried all manner of encouragement, and it just hasn't worked. So we passed a package of pretty aggressive legislation back in April that will now mandate retrofits of big buildings. Exhibit A here, Trump Tower. And you can actually, for your listeners who are urban planning geeks, there's a website called metered.nyc. You can type in any address, it'll tell you the relative energy efficiency of any building.
Any building.
Yes, at least in New York City. Do it for Trump Tower, and it's in the bottom.
It's the old, the pink marbles.
Well, it's actually very basic stuff. It's, it's insulated in the windows and the walls, it's, it's lights in common areas that turn off when people aren't in use, it's upgrading the heating systems. It's not particularly high-tech, you just have to do it, and we're now mandating it. And, and that will, that will dramatically curtail our greenhouse gas footprint. And on the resiliency front, on the protecting for what's already coming, we're not just an island, we're mostly a low-lying island. With the exception of places which have upper or heights in the neighborhood name, like the Upper West Side, which is kind of high.
Getting up there.
And Washington Heights, which is also a couple hundred feet up.
Like a big slope, let me think about it that way, right?
Exactly, but, but most of the island is not much above sea level. And so, when you have a weather event like Superstorm Sandy, we're inundated. And there's a plan now to try and protect much of Lower Manhattan with essentially a U around the part that faces the harbor. That'll be functioned sort of like an elevated park that will protect us in storms. Some people call it the dry line, you've heard of the High Line, this is the dry line. It is a one and a half billion dollar construction project, and we're really worried about disruption to the surrounding neighborhoods and impact on green space. And the nightmare would be that it's half-built and then we have a, a construction project sitting on our doorstep. But we're gonna have to invest in resiliency like this all over the city because the storms are coming, and we, we can no longer treat this as a hypothetical.
And is it harder when you don't get support from the federal government? We have the, the president believes that climate change is a hoax perpetrated by the Chinese. Not just this city, but any city across the country. Doesn't that make it 10 times more difficult when you don't have federal support?
Brutal. We're not gonna win this war without national governments acting. And not, 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 not our, more critical than this government nationally. But cities are not powerless, and city leaders who care about this can do a lot. And, you know, Donald Trump, we pray, will not be here for too much longer. And while we're waiting for a federal government which gets us back on course, we don't have an excuse here for not taking bold action. And if every city in the world did what New York is doing to retrofit buildings, it would start to bend the curve. If every city in the world started to invest in mass transit and took measures to get people out of private automobiles, like we're doing here in New York City, it would start to bend the curve. So if, to the extent your audience is thinking about urban policy, we need to act whether the government at the national level gets it or not.
Right, like, there's no excuses anymore because it's too, it's too powerless of a situation right now. Like, it's at the doorstep here.
We are in this crisis.
Do your constituents, everyone understand, is everyone, like, does everyone understand- Do your constituents, everyone understand, is everyone, like, does everyone understand that it's here now? It's not like a problem for like, oh, my grandchildren, their grandchildren. Like, it's our problem right now.
They get it intellectually. But when the trade-offs are close to home.
Well, let's talk about that. Okay, so the trade-off I was thinking of is the plastic bag tax. Which has gotta be controversial in your district, right?
It is.
Right. So there's a, go, well, explain the, the, the new l- law and how this is all gonna work.
Well, New York City is burning through something, uh I think the number is nine billion plastic bags a year or some, some extraordinary amount. Um they're filling up our landfills. They're clogging our sewers. They're winding up in trees and parks. Wildlife is choking on it. Um and we can do better. Uh we passed a bill uh this year that will prohibit the use of single-use plastic bags in our retail establishments. Um and uh it, it, it is not universally supported in my district, I'll say. Um some people have made an equity argument and said that for low-income people, uh that'll be an extra burden. But the truth is, all of us need to change the way we go about our daily lives. And that's going to include carrying around reusable bags so that we can stop burning through this trash that's harming our planet in so many ways.
And it works. The other thing I wanted to say about this tax is, I met with the, with Christine Quinman. She was the speaker ten years ago. And I told her, New York City should implement a plastic bag tax. And she said to me, she talked to the members, and it was this, it was the income is- issue. Was a real sticking point. I think we've gotten to the point where we're, we realize the problem is so great that we can get, get past it.
We may have gotten around that because we're just banning them now, so there's no fee. There is going to be a fee connected to paper bags so that.
Is it five cents?
Uh I think it might be ten. We should check that. But uh that's to make sure we don't just replace all of the plastic with, uh with, with tree-based products. Um uh I believe that people who get public assistance will be exempted from that fee. So we are making an effort to help low-income people. And we're giving out uh hundreds of thousands of free reusable bags. Um very cute little things that you can roll up and even put in your pocket or your bookbag and have on the ready. And we're making those available free. So we are trying to make sure that no one's left behind, whether you're rich or poor.
You know, the petroleum lobby had said that those bags, the argument against them, I kid you not, was that they are unsanitary. And so they get, they get dirty. Now, of course, the bags are washable. That's like saying, well, like, they, maybe they're rich enough where they don't wear the same clothes ever, and they just throw them out after they wear them once. But like, clothes can be washed, so too can bags. It, it's, that is the core of their argument against it. It's unbelievable. And they actually, they sell that to people. And people, oh, yeah, well, they're unsanitary.
And today, the, the, the waste is just incredible. You can go into, to some stores and you buy uh a can of beans and they give you a double plastic bag. Uh I, I've gone to the stores where I've bought a roll of breath mints and they give me a plastic bag. Uh and when I tell them I don't want the bag, they throw it into the trash. We have got to change that equation. And this is actually, it's a market-based solution. You know, i- i- it is, it's making sure that the pricing at, at the checkout counter reflects the environmental impact.
The only, it's just like congestion pricing. It's the same thing. You need to use these tools to change behavior because behavior is the hardest thing to change. And so you can price people into different behaviors. And then once they get into that pattern, quickly, they're fine, right? But changing that pattern, whether it's like how you drive your car, when you drive your car, if you have a car, or taking a plastic bag, it's the same concept.
And this is not something the U, uh the US in general and New York is on the cutting edge of. There are cities and countries all over the world that have already im- imposed either fees or bans on plastic bags. And everything's working just fine.
Where, where every single city it's been implemented in, it's worked. It'll work here. So, thank you, Mark. This has been a great conversation. Awesome having you on. Go Mets. Thanks so much for coming by. This has been awesome.
All right, thank you. Congrats on the new podcast.
Thank you.